Yeah, we'll start with finances. After that, we'll move on to any questions that I'm sure... I can only imagine there's going to be a few questions, being that we're talking about the City of Alba. As Tim said, I'm a city councilman for Ward 3, City of Alba. Currently, I am the chairman of the Finance Committee. I chair the Water Sewer Committee, and I'm also on Personnel Committee, as well as chair of the Board of Adjustments and the Board of Code of Appeals, which has not met since that board started, so crossing our fingers, keep that one down. With that, Joe Don and I decided, this presentation was actually started about six months ago to try to find time to sit down with Joe Don and put together some numbers, so that we could start putting a presentation out to people that showed where the money goes, how it's spent, because we were finding that a lot of people didn't really know. It originated through what we had been doing was the Strategic Planning Committee. Some of you may have been part of that or had heard about it. It started about a year ago, a group of citizens, and myself, and Joe Don, and another council member, decided that without a plan, it's hard to do things according to how the people really want that done, so we decided to sit down and start developing a strategic plan, not only for the City of Alba, but for each one of its entities. Out of that, that's where Joe Don and I realized the city finances were really a gray area in most people's minds. They thought they kind of knew how it went. After Joe Don gave a presentation, and the hours of questions that ensued after that, we decided that it was probably time to start getting out to the people and showing them what's really going on and how that works, instead of just speculation. So, Joe Don's here, he'll answer any questions that you may have about the City Hall. I may ask him to detail some things for us, and if you have any questions for him, feel free, or for me along the way, just stop me and we'll go over that. A few things that we're going to hit on in here, just quick outline, municipal budgeting, how that works, and first part of that, we'll get into why we've changed, how we account for things, and we're now under a different act from the State of Oklahoma. We'll get into the comparison, city employment, and then what we're calling areas for success. Gets into the strategic planning. Municipal budgeting. Until this year, we had been on the Estimate of Needs. The Estimate of Needs was a process developed at statehood for city governments to prepare their budgets for the next fiscal years. The problem with it, you were able to use 90 percent, or you can budget for 90 percent of your reoccurring revenues, the sales tax. That was the only thing we could use, 90 percent of the last year's sales tax. It also didn't break things down enough for us. It broke it down into just a few things, there was a long form required for that, so we could break things down to Personnel Services, Maintenance and Operations, and Capital Outlet. Now, anybody that has run a business, and I know a lot of you run your own businesses or accounting backgrounds, you realize that breaking things, all your expenses into three groups, doesn't really give you a very good idea of what's going on. When Joe Don came on, that was something that we, in the Finance Committee, had always questioned, you know, how do we know if our water department's making money? Well, we didn't. There was no way of knowing, because all the revenues came into one account, and all the expenses came out of the same account. So, in order to go in and say, okay, is the water department covering its expenses? It would take days and weeks to actually figure out for that specific period of time, because every day, another check gets paid to somebody for a water main break, or whatever, or payroll goes out, or we get more revenues in. So, there's no way of knowing on a month-to-month basis whether we were making money or not. And as a service to the people, we thought that that shouldn't be a necessarily money-making profit center, but it should be something that's covering it. Well, we couldn't tell. Same with the sewer department and sanitation department, there's no way of knowing. So, this year, we've made the change, and we've switched to the Municipal Budgeting Act. This requires us to really get in depth on our finances, and we can start to take a look at things in a whole other way. We break it down into a lot more departments, and as you'll see as we go through here, how we're able to break that down. We're now able to use 90 percent of all appropriations until actual revenues, able to estimated estimates are received. We can make budget amendments at any time. We no longer have to do that at the end of the year, or we still have some, you know, there's a lot of legal things we have to jump through to get those amendments made, that's a lot simpler to do now. One of the things, and I'll tell you, an amendment is really important. Last year, we had the airport was selling a lot of Jet A. They had in their budget a certain amount of money that they could spend on Jet A fuel. They had to exceed that halfway, not even halfway through the year, there were going to be about $30,000 in the hole. Well, their budget would not allow them to do that. By changing, it makes it a lot simpler, and so before, we had to go and really do a lot of finagling with money to get that moved around, so that the airport could even function. No longer requires all of the hoops to be jumped through, now that we're on this new act, the Municipal Budgeting Act. You know, we've now created, we've got a sinking fund estimated with County Excise Board. We are able to now, instead of just spending 90 percent of last year's sales tax, we can actually estimate now, so if we believe that we're going to be bringing in more money the next year, we can actually go and use that as part of our budget. And like it says, we cannot exceed 90 percent until that money's come in. The last couple of years, with the oil boom and all the sales tax revenues that's come in, everybody has been able to see through the paper how much is coming in. We're now able to spend that as it's coming in, as opposed to having to wait a full fiscal year. A lot of the questions that were asked of us, well, if the revenues are up so high, how come we're not doing some things? We couldn't. Until that year was over, we couldn't do anything with it. So, we may have half a million dollars that was extra, and we can't touch it. Now, we can actually start to use it, because we can estimate ahead of time what we believe we're going to have, and appropriate for that. Now, our required content of this is detail of departmental needs. We can break every department down into Personnel Services, Material Supplies, Other Services and Charges, Capital Outlet, Debt Services, and Fund Transfers. For every single department, we can do that now. Now, we can sit there and look at the end of the month, okay, is the water department covering its expenses? Is the sanitation? And we'll get into some numbers. I will let you know, the numbers that are on here that we show are actually from the end of November. It's hard to update this every single month, so we're going to try to do it on a quarterly if we can do that, so the next presentation may be different. But by being able to break that stuff down, it's a lot easier to tell where we have shortfalls. The main reason that's very important is before, every time that the rates were adjusted, it was kind of a crapshoot. They raised them, said, "Hope that's enough." Now, we can look at and say, we can start to forecast, okay, the last six months, we're here, what do we anticipate for the next six months? Is rate change needed? And we can justify a rate change, whether it's up or down. And, you know, I think, I believe that we talked about in the last meeting, how the water department has a $65,000 shortfall of expenses over revenue. That'll probably be looked at for the next meeting, or we're going to adjust our rates. Before, we couldn't do that. It was all at the end of the year. Hey, at the end of the year, it looks like we're a little short, we better raise that for the next 12 months. Now, we can do that periodically through the year, if needed, and we can try to head that stuff off before, try to get to that stuff before it's too far along, and we end up being two or three times that amount in debt. For the general revenue, our general fund for the City of Alba, 89 percent of what we have comes from sales tax. Very small portion comes from transfers, that would be transfers in to the general fund. Miscellaneous is, oh, we've got some interest, the income from the pool, licenses, permits, that sort of thing. The ambulance money that comes in is what we collect from AccuFile. That's not necessarily what we build, that's what we collect from there. The city owns several properties that are rented, and lease payments that come in. But the major portion of what we get to work with is sales tax. If you're not aware, cities, municipalities in the State of Oklahoma cannot collect ad below 10 taxes. We can't pass anything that says we can use it, that's all county and state. So, the City of Alba, and any city in the state, is not allowed to do anything with ad below 10 taxes. We hear that a lot, about, well, why don't we look at collecting ad below 10 taxes or something? Can't do it. Unless the legislature in Oklahoma City changes their mind about some things, that probably won't ever happen. So, we get to work with sales taxes. Budgeted revenue, this is a comparison over the last three years. The red line is this year, so you can see that since fiscal year 10 and 12, we have had that increase. That's directly related to the oil boom and sales tax collected from that. Also, keep in mind, we'll get to some slides where these numbers are going to be a little bit off. We changed mid-year, or at the beginning of this year, how we changed for things, so when we get to some of the expenses in the departments, that will be different, and I'll explain that when we get there. Budgeted expenses, this is for the general fund, 65 percent goes to administration, police and the courts are 7 percent, fire gets 8 percent, swimming pool, one, library, four, ambulance, five, and street department would be 9 percent. Budgeted expenses by area, we're looking at transfers going out. Now, transfers out, that is sales tax collected by the city for other entities, hospital, rec center, and for the college. That's that money coming back out. We have maintenance and operations at 8 percent, but the main one is personnel. The city runs on people. Without people, we don't have much of anything. Here's the comparison for year expenses over the previous years. Again, the reason that we're going to be a little lower here is because we're now breaking some of those things out into different, we've moved some stuff fund-wise, so some of those expenses that were coming out of the general fund last year are no longer coming out of that fund, they're accounted into a different fund. Enterprise fund, this is what used to be called the Homestead Holdings or Homestead Fund, if anybody's familiar with that, if anybody's been on city council or anything in the past, they've heard of the Homestead Holding. I'm not going to get a whole lot into what the Homestead Holding account was like, but it was pretty much a nightmare over the last couple of years, a lot of money in and out. It was used, not inappropriately, but it was just used so much, it was really getting difficult to track it. Now, we've got it handled where we can split that stuff out. The enterprise fund is our utilities, that's where all that money's coming and going, it all goes into the enterprise fund now. Sanitation represents 44 percent of our revenue, water, 44 percent, sewer, nine. Landfill, that's your roll-offs, and then we don't have, we have a little bit of money that comes out of the air salts, and this lane has some little bit of interest, but not enough to represent any portion of that. Our revenue comparison, we're up, we're putting in a lot more meters, we're getting a lot more service outside the city limits that we're having to take care of. We have a lot of bordering businesses on the city limits that we're responsible for taking care of on the water, sanitation, and sewer. On the expense side of the enterprise fund, you can see where the money goes back out. 42 percent of our revenue in the enterprise fund goes back out for sanitation, and 44 for water. And we all know, I mean, the main expenses, the garbage trucks, people have to pick that up, so that's where the money coming out of that goes. Budgeted expenses by area in the enterprise funds, pretty even, personnel's the majority, material supplies. Transfers, we do have some transfers out of that that goes back to the City of Alba Fund, that's where the transfer into the general fund came from, was out of the enterprise fund. We do have some debt service. We have the equipment that the City of Alba's purchased for the streets, that would be a part of that. Comparison over the years, this is where it's going to get a little bit tricky. Obviously, we're a lot higher this year, because the enterprise fund is being due differently than in years past. We've left that slide in there, and just, it's, more helps Joe Don and I kind of track what's going on, than to try to explain why that is, but it's different just because we've changed our account over the last year. Alba Economic Development Authority Funds, budgeted revenue, we've got scholarship and the rec center. The difference there, the reason they're not even, because they do split the 1 percent sales tax, or the 1 penny sales tax, they split that, and the reason those are different is the rec center also generates its own revenue. They have through fees to beat the gym and concessions, and a few other things that they've got. That's why they actually show a little bit more, so they do bring some money into that fund. The Homestead Capital Improvement Fund is really just a non-existent anymore meter deposit, we do have some money there, but that would be, here's the comparison of last couple of years. Again, with the increased sales tax, that's where that money's going to be coming from, that's why we've been showing great gains over the last couple of years. You know, Lynn does a good job of reporting where that is every month, so we won't go into how we're doing. So far this year, we seem to still be up. Maybe starting to flatten out, but we also have another store that'll be opening up at Atwoods. We do intend to, or we do expect that to start showing an increase as well. I think that's going to bring a lot of people from out of town that are currently leaving to go to, you know, Enid, those areas that that's going to keep here, so that could be a good thing. Other funds, budgeted revenue, here's, we've got the Street and Alley Fund, we've got the airport grant money that comes in, we have the hotel motel tax fund, Mr. Bickerstaff is familiar with that one. We have the airport fund, which is, you know, that's going to be the running and maintaining of our airport cemetery funds, donation fund, and municipal court fund. The Alba Police Department Drug Fund, that's, if you're not aware, that's, they had a, if they have a drug bust, and they get federal money back or state money from that, that's where that goes. The police department gets to use that in their budget. Comparison, again, this one's going to get a little tricky, just because a lot of these funds were part of another fund last year, and now we break those out individually. So, the red line's where we actually are for this year's budget. If you look at the airport, how in 11 and 12, they had a huge spike, that was from a grant. The FAA had a grant that had to be accounted for, that's why that was so large there. The hotel motel tax, you can see a steady increase there, that's directly related to sales tax, which will probably increase with the opening of the third hotel. Our other funds expenses, you can start to see where that money goes out. The airport accounts for a quarter of it, the Alba Economic Development Authority accounts for a quarter of it, and the scholarship, about 20 percent. Currently, the scholarship money that goes out, they do have a savings, I don't want to say a savings account, but they have money that they keep back instead of using the full amount every year. They're trying to build it up, so that they have, I believe, three years' worth reserved in that fund, so that if we do start to paper off on the sales tax, or go the other way, that they can still continue to offer the scholarships, and have a couple of years to kind of figure out how they're going to handle the lower taxes coming in. The other funds are broken out, you can kind of see where that money's going out. And the comparison. Again, we're up on expenses, when revenue's up, expenses are going to be up as well for the majority of those funds. Our street and alley, if you look at that, there in the middle, the peak, I'll handle that at the end, but we're spending a lot more money on our street and alleys this year. Prior years, we spent about $44,000, because that's what all, that's the only, that's what was required by the state. We got state money for that, that's all that was spent. If you wonder why the streets were in poor shape for many, many years, it's because there's only $44,000 budgeted for materials. This year, we have $344,000 budgeted. Last year, we did add $120,000 to that, the city kicked in, we decided to bump that up. We also have the $5 fee on everybody's water meter now. All that money goes directly to buying materials. We do have the option of having that money help fund equipment purchases, we did not use it for that this year. We want to try to make as much of that money, as long as current members are on the council, their objective is to take all that money, spend it on materials, and get as much stuff done as we can. We can't, we obviously can't tie a future council to do anything, so there's no way we can make that in ordinance and make them do that, but current council is dedicated to making sure that the streets get as much money as we collect them. Over the, for this year, these are some of our capital improvement items out of the general fund. If you have questions on those, just let me know. You know, the Alba Police Department bought two vehicles. One of those vehicles came from their drug money, the other came out of the general revenue, general fund out of the city. So, the city bought one, and then their drug money bought one. Enterprise fund, that's our utilities, we've got a lot of infrastructure expenses there, water, sewer lines, that sort of thing. Vehicles, we've got a lot of equipment that's being purchased there. Street and alley, the $300,000, that's where that comes back in, that's how much money we've budgeted for street and alley. That does not include the $44,000, because that's going to be coming out of the general fund. The ARC has got some purchases that they're looking at doing. Currently, the ARC is looking to get air conditioning, I believe the engineers have that in their hands right now, so as soon as they get that, the ARC should be ready to start putting that in. I think they wanted to start bids by March, hopefully have it taken care of by the summer.
We want to have it completed by March.
Okay.
There's a big term in March that we want to try to have it completed.
Okay, completed by March then. Personnel, this is just going to show us the number of workers that are working in the city. Currently, we have 68 full-time, 57 part-time. Part-time, you know, that sounds like a lot, but when you figure in the number of our volunteer fire department, our, we've got the lifeguards at the pool, you know, and there's more than you start to think about when you think of 57 part-time. That's not 57 part-time year-round, those are a lot of seasonal workers, so. But 68 full-time, 22 are in administration, 20 are the police department, 25 are the fire department, both of those do have some part-time people in that number. Sanitation, street water, ambulance, the rec center, and then either that would include the swimming pool, the cemetery. Priorities for the City of Alba, this ties into our, the group that was trying to get the strategic planning together. That group is no longer meeting, we have kind of got some, we've got the ball rolling on a few things, and I can talk a few about that in a second, but things that come into our plan are economic growth, a lot of that's going on on the east side of town right now, our revenue growth, not just through sales tax, but trying to find other ways of growing that, if possible, by adding, you know, if we can add more people to our city services, that increases a little bit of revenue, and our expense control. And Joe Don has been diligently working on the expense control, and by changing the way we account for things, has been very helpful, especially for him, and he can now track that stuff. And it's start, it's a slow process, nothing's going to happen overnight. Joe Don's been with us about almost two years, and the attitude at City Hall, especially on the Finance Committee, has really gotten a lot, a lot better. We start to know where the money's going, where it's coming from, it makes our job a lot easier, and I can only imagine this making Joe Don's life a little bit easier. There's still a long way to go, a lot of things going on down there. Currently, he's working on rewriting a lot of our personnel policies, but the work descriptions, job descriptions. Lynn had a good article about the need for our ambulance service to have another paramedic. That wasn't news to us. Joe Don and I, the Personnel Committee, were, I believe it was about five months ago, sat down with our new ambulance director, and talked about the need to get another paramedic and what that's going to require. It's not a cheap undertaking, it requires a whole different setup in an ambulance, larger pay scale, and that means that we have to redevelop our personnel job descriptions for those people, and move people around. It's not something we can just hire somebody and do it. The city has to follow a very, it's a pretty strict policy on how people and the pay schedule, where they start, where they can go, and where they can end up. It's not just that you start at a 1, and, you know, every year you move up, and you'll end up at a 50 if you stay there long enough. You can go up as high as whatever your job description allows you, and that's it. So, when you have to bring in a new position and fit it in there somewhere, it changes the whole scope of that, and you can see when you have almost 100 employees that fit onto that, it's kind of hard to move them in and put them where you want. We don't have the luxury of just hiring somebody and saying, "We're going to pay you this much, and that'll work." We have to go by what we have down on paper, and what's going to be legal for us to do. I think that's the last slide, do you have any questions?
Wes, who decides, for instance, the new business coming in out there at woods, who decides whether they're going to be annexed, or as far as city taxes?
The decision to annex them, I guess ultimately would come from City Hall. You know, we're currently working on that right now. You know, we, it's tough, annexation is a very tough problem. To some, it's great, to others, they don't want it, and most of the time, annexation really doesn't affect the landowner that much. If it's a residential annexation, it affects people more than if it's a commercial. For instance, when you annex somebody residentially, you know, you've got to, you've got to follow the same rules for them that you do for everybody else that's in the city limits. Well, part of our policy has been that if you are in the city limits, we'll provide water and sewer to your property. Well, so when you annex a bunch of houses, if they're all on septic, is it worth it? Do you annex them and spend the money to go put them on sewer, run the water lines out there? Do you annex in what they're already hooked up to? Because some of those are antiquated systems, and they don't pass our code. When it comes to the commercial side of it, there are businesses that would like to be located outside the city limits, because that's an advantage, that they can advertise that they don't have to pay city sales tax. To the city's end, that's detrimental. We currently have one business that's building new stuff right on the edge of the city limits, and all I'll say is KNS Tire, but, you know, that's about a $10,000 per month to the city loss, if that's not brought into the city limits. You know, Atwoods is, I believe, we, about a $40,000 a month?
Yeah, we're estimating themselves, it may be, a rough guessing, about a half million a month, and that's going to equate to about $21,000 a month in sales tax that comes to the city.
You know, and if you're going to spend 50,000, 75,000 to run sewer lines out to them, and water, anybody can look at their city bill and know that the cost to run that to the edge of their property will never be paid for on their city bill. So, the city has to look at ways to make sure that we offset that cost, plus get them in the city limits. So, annexation's tough. It's currently being worked on, I suppose in the next half, well, two weeks, we'll have a lot more information, make sure that's taken care of. You know, Atwoods is just a small part of it. The, you know, when we did the industrial site, down Industrial Park, that was never annexed, but yet we ran water, sewer, put streets in out there, it's not the city limits. So, a lot of things happen, one council does things thinking it's a great thing, the next council gets the fallout from it, whether it's good or bad. So, when things don't work out right, the current council has to try to make it right. We're in that process, it's a slow process. But as far as the annexation, where it goes, it's City Hall decision, see what we can do, what'll work, and what's allowed by law. Annexation's not what it used to be. You can't just go out and annex a strip down the highway and then take Atwoods and be done with it. The rules have changed. You have to take the land in between you and the new property, you can't cherry pick what you want. So, it makes it very challenging, and that's just been in the last probably five or seven years, I believe, that changed. So, a lot of people that think, well, I know they annexed some store five miles out of town, and another town, can't do that anymore. It's a bigger challenge. If that answered your question. Yes, sir?
For a water meter, water only investment in the east or trash, what is the base rate?
Base rate right now is about $17.67 a month. That's the minimum bill.
So, if I wanted to look at water, with the senior side, it'd be $17.
That's the minimum.
Yeah, plus whatever usage.
Yeah.
Okay.
Pay what?